Picture of Simon Cowell. It's a no for me. Have to give Jeff a golden buzzer. So he can put down it's an absolute yes.
At this time, I'd like to call to order the Health and Human Services Committee. If we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
To the letter of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk will take the role, please.
Commissioner Samasco.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Trello.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present. I did have one request to make a change to the agenda. Moving the updates. Item four to be item three and then citizens to be heard to item four.
With that. Adjustment to the agenda, I'll make a motion to accept the.
Second.
Agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll now accept a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll welcome Representative Andrew Bieler to give a presentation on EV batteries and SOARs. Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's your presentation.
All right, well, thank you, Board of Commissioners, for the chance to speak briefly. As I mentioned, to Commissioner Beeden, I'll be providing more of a general legislative update on what the legislature's been up to in the first four months. Some of which has been in relation to EV and site preparedness, economic development, things like that, which I'll touch on here in the legislative update. But grateful for the chance to speak just very briefly tonight and provide an update on the first few months of the 102nd Legislature. It's been a busy several months and I'm very happy to have the chance to just provide our county government an update as well as to hopefully discuss what I can do to be more helpful as your representative in Lansing or as some of your representatives in Lansing. But so that we can all work together as a county and state government team. The first major piece of legislation to move through the House this session was the so-called retirement tax cut and earned income tax credit expansion. These were two bills, House Bill 4001 and 4002, which, when initially introduced, were very similar to the bills that I introduced as the first bills of the session as well. But there were a few key differences. First, the bills as introduced would have failed to provide immediate relief to the majority of seniors, taking four years to fully implement the tax cut. Second, they would have failed to provide relief on the broadest possible terms by picking and choosing whose retirement income would be tax-free immediately and whose would have to wait to be fully implemented. My plan, on the other hand, House Bills 4008 and 4009 provided fair, broad, and immediate relief to seniors and working families. And after negotiation with the majority party, I was pleased to report that their plan essentially turned into our plan. We were very happy to see them move in our direction on that. However, it looked like partisan politics got in the way of what could have been a good bipartisan way to relieve Michiganders from rising inflation. $1.5 billion over three years was added to the bill, which would be appropriated to the Strategic Outreach and Reserve Fund. Additionally, the bill would have amended, or excuse me, was amended to include $180 one-time checks to provide so-called inflation relief to all Michigan taxpayers. They would have been paid to each filer. So if you were a joint filer with your spouse, you would have received one check. If you were a single filer, you would have received one check. So for a host of reasons, I think this plan was a bad plan. In addition, though, these checks would have totaled about $800 million, which would have been pulled from fiscal year 2022's budget, which would have automatically canceled out an income tax cut that was due to all Michiganders from 4.25 to 4.05. This is the tax paid by all families and small businesses in the state. So I, along with many others in the House, saw protecting the automatics in automatic income tax cut as a priority. So ultimately, I did vote no on this bill. I just want to be very clear, I didn't vote no on it for the reasons of the retirement and EITC tax cuts. I voted no on it to protect the income tax cut that all Michiganders were owed. However, unfortunately, due to a procedural rule in the Senate, the tax cut was protected. So I'm happy to report that all Michiganders will receive a two-tenths reduction in their income tax cut starting in tax year 2023. The next major piece of legislation to move through the legislature was House Bill 4016, which appropriated approximately $2 billion to provide funding ultimately to a Ford Motor Company battery manufacturing plant located in Marshall, Michigan. That was money that would have gone through the Strategic Outreach and Reserve or SOAR Fund. For a host of reasons, I have been and continue to oppose corporate welfare schemes such as these as a means of stimulating the economy. And in this case, Ford Motor Company would have been partnering with a Chinese-owned firm to provide technology on battery development to include a footprint of Chinese nationals permanently located on site. Additionally, the project promised 2,500 jobs in total. This meant that Michigan taxpayers would be on the hook for roughly $800,000 per job, for jobs that would pay, on average, less than $50,000 a year. So frankly, it seemed like a bad deal. In the past, we've seen cost-per-job ratios in the neighborhood of $250,000 per job. And so in my opinion and in the opinion of many folks in the House and in the Senate, this was not a deal that we wanted to sign Michigan up for. Needless to say, I opposed the bill and it passed on largely partisan lines and became the fifth bill signed into law by the governor this year. In the final month of the legislature, we've seen a much more rapid pace on several of the majority party's priorities. In that time, the Houses repealed the state's final restriction on abortion, MCL 750.14 and .15. We repealed Michigan's Right to Work Law and we reinstated the state's prevailing wage provision, all of which I opposed and were passed on largely partisan lines. That largely summarizes the items that we've been working on in the first four months of the legislature. I'd like to just briefly make mention of some of the items that I'm tracking that are of outsized concern for our county and our area and open and hoping for feedback from all of you on other items that I could be tracking. But at this time, the items that I'm tracking are the short-term rental bill, which is was very similar to one that was passed in the House last legislative session. The so-called gravelled bill, the aggregate mining bill, which I know is of some concern to some of the more rural parts of the county. And then any bill or appropriation that would involve infrastructure funding, particularly as it relates to drinking water, which I know Commissioner Baldwin and I have worked closely on in the past. If there's other issues that you'd like me to be more aware of or you'd like me to report back on, I'm more than happy to do so and to provide subsequent updates as appropriate. And with that, I again thank you for your time and with the permission of the Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions that the Board members may have.
Thank you, Representative Bieler. Are there any questions from Commissioners?
I already talked to your office. They're relaying my questions to you.
Okay.
So you can get back with me with the questions I gave them.
Thank you.
So I think you and I have met on a couple of topics. You know, I'm interested in the minimum wage increase for the state.
That's right.
And some follow-up there. So that's something I would like to just keep in touch with you on. Any other questions from Commissioners? All right, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to citizens wishing to be heard. The first one is Virginia Currie. The topic is the library.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Virginia Corry. I'm from the Fort Grashit region, part of the county. And just to give you some idea, I've long been involved with the library. I spearheaded getting a library branch for the Fort Grashit area. And unfortunately, the vote for the millage for that came two weeks after 9/11 and it got, it was just a bad timing. Before that, I was involved in the change from Dr. Wu, a former director many, many years ago. Library now is the best it's ever been. The staff are friendly, they're helpful, services are very efficient. And the reason I'm here today is to talk to you about the facilities. I've been going to all the library board meetings and Friends of the Library meetings. I've talked to a lot of library patrons and other citizens. And the library isn't, I'm sure you're well aware, is not in good condition. The elevator works sporadically, so handicapped people can't get upstairs. There have been plumbing issues, roof issues is the latest thing, they've had to close. This is the Port Huron branch we're talking about. I've gone to the meetings to figure out what's going on and honestly, I can't figure out what's going on. Can't figure out why we have this millage and we have money available to use to improve the facilities or buy a new facility or even build a new facility. I don't really care which one of those three happens, but what I do see is, for some reason that I can't figure out, is that nobody has come to the conclusion to do something. Now, I know that there have always been things in the works and years and years ago, they paid a lot of money to have somebody come and figure out what needed to be done to the present library to make it work. And nothing was done. Nothing was done and nothing was done. And now that money is, we can kiss it goodbye because it has to be redone. It's been so long and it's no longer an accurate report. The best libraries in Michigan's I've seen are district libraries. We looked at this a long time ago and maybe it's time to revisit that. People in this county are very, very passionate about libraries. And I'm sure we can get together if people are interested, we could spearhead a, you know, District Library Ad hoc Committee and try to get people to support something like that. So maybe it's time, I don't know. But what I do know is we need to have something done about that building or have a different building.
You're gonna have to wrap it up, if you would, please.
Pardon me?
You get three minutes and you're gonna have to wrap it up, if you would, please.
I am, I'm well done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next citizen is Helen Hermes. The topic is general.
Our country is like a piece of cloth. And we're losing it fast because everyone is grabbing at it and pulling the thread from it for their ideas. And they talk about unity, but they want their ideas followed. They talk about being Christian, they talk about following Robert's rules, and I see a lot of violations in those two areas. On March 6th, I think was the last meeting I was here. I felt I was cut short. So I went home and I repeated what I always do. I turn on my computer, put the timer on and go through the little talk I had. The shortest talk that I did was two and a half minutes. So I don't know if I talked faster or slower or what happened, but I, home, I do practice what I plan on talking about. I would like to say this. Our Commissioners are here. If you have a personal difference with them, you should keep it personal. You should not excoriate them on the board. That is not the thing to do. If you have a personal difference, take it. If you think someone's committed a crime, have the backbone to go to the sheriff and write out what your crime thought is. Give the person a chance. Don't excoriate anyone up here on this board. It's not right. If you want to excoriate me, that's okay because I can stand because I don't give a X, Y, Z, what anyone thinks about me or talks about me. You gotta have some backbone and there's more going on. That's all I got to say for tonight.
The next citizen wishing to be heard is Kaye Kumbo. The topic is Arnie Coontz. That would be in the next meeting where that would be handled.
My name is Kaye Kumbo and I'm from Lynn Township. And I, I still am questioning the Commission's action earlier this year to effectively remove Arnie Coontz from the Advisory Committee for the Health Department. Arnie gave years of his life and a great deal more to critical work with homeless in this county, but also many other issues in this county. And how do you, there was absolutely no reason given for, to effectively dismiss him from that work. And how do you explain that to the people of St. Clair County? I believe that the people of St. Clair County deserve to know why this good man was effectively dismissed from a position like that. Thank you. Do I get a response here or?
No. The next item on the agenda is conceptual initiatives. None this evening. Seeing no old business, moving on to new business, item 7A, the Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant.
You're on this committee, if you would.
Yeah, the comment sheet that you turned in actually is addressed in a different meeting. It's mine. So at this time, I'll accept a motion on the Marijuana Operation Oversight Grant to be moved to the full board. So moved, Baldwin.
Support, Rushing.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other Human Services matters to be brought before the Board tonight? Seeing none? For information only, I'll accept a motion to receive and file the Health Department Points of Interest for March.
So moved.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, I'll accept a motion to receive and file packets.
So moved.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Calling the Judiciary Public Safety Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Present.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Trello.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Here. Seeing no, we have one addition to the, or change to the agenda. Resolution 2305 approving participation in the opioid settlements for final action.
Do you need that added as 7C?
No, it should just be added to B.
Okay.
It's for final action.
Okay. I make the motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Now can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. I have no citizens to be heard for the Judiciary or Public Safety Committee. Moving on to there's no updates, conceptual initiatives, oral business, so moving on to the new business, which is 7A Local Emergency Planning Committee Membership.
Make a motion, send that to full board.
Support. Beeden.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Moving on to 7B, Resolution 2305 approving the participation in the opioid settlements.
Make a motion to approve that for final action.
Support.
I got a couple of questions for Carrie. What's the dollar amount again on this and the term of the payout?
So these are new settlements over and above what we have already agreed to. And the dollar amount could vary to just under $4 million to $1.5 million. It depends on how many government units in Michigan sign up to participate. If more than 50% of the unit sign on, then it will be the $4 million figure. And in the memo, you can see there are four different settlements and they range from one year to 13 years that it'll be paid over.
Okay, thank you.
Question for Carrie. So what was the amounts that were agreed previously? You mentioned this is a separate, just generally speaking. It was around $7 million and that is distributed over 18 years. How many different lawsuits was that? That was for two different settlements. And then last point, could you just get on the record why it's for final action? Yes, we have to sign the participation agreements before April 18th and our next board meeting is on the 20th. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do you need a roll call vote on this one?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And we have no, any information from the Commissioners?
Well, they're fixing the roof on the courthouse. I was in Chief probation officer's office last week and it was, the paint was all peeling down. There was a big truck there with, with the roof on it. It sounded nice, I don't know how that got done, but they were very happy that they got their roof fixed, especially given the last week of rain. It's a judiciary public, it's a judiciary issue.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? Hearing none, moving on to receive and file packets?
Make motion, receive and file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
And adjournment?
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried.
At this time, I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Samasco.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Present.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Here.
Commissioner Trello.
Here.
And there's no additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. So we'll move to citizens to be heard.
Actually, I would make the motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I promise I'll get that right next time. Citizens to be heard.
We do have a few of them. So tonight, we'll start with Mr. Kevin Linky. This is for the 26 Mile Road.
So, yeah, the 26 Mile Road project, that's kind of been the hot topic with the county and with you guys and with the citizens here. I don't know if you guys have paid any attention to what's going on over the last few years in Macomb County and Wayne County. Lot of corruption investigation going on there. They just wrapped him up, actually Anthony Baracco just got sentenced to some time in our local federal courthouse. And I mean, he ran Macomb County for 20 years, got away with all this shit. And now he's sent in a federal prison. He's on his way to one. So the question I think the Board needs to ask themselves is, are you all willing to get indicted federally over the 26 Mile Road project? Because what I'll explain to you is, you don't know the conversations that Jeff has behind closed doors. You don't know what deals he's worked out. And you don't know what he's wrapping you up in. And I'll tell you the way the feds work. They're not gonna come get you next week, next year. It'll be five years, 10 years down the road. They're gonna come knock on your doors and they're gonna hand you an indictment. And let me explain to you about the federal system. It's very expensive to litigate. Take it from someone that knows, I have four federal cases going right now. And when the feds come to get you, they have you. There's no trial, there's no, they, I mean, they'll play the show a little bit, but they've already gotten you. So, you know, you guys need to really ask yourselves if this is worth it to cater to his little pet project and to enrich his buddies if you want to be the subject of a federal indictment. They just got the mayor of East Point, $10,000 CARES Act. She took 10 grand from COVID money that she shouldn't have taken. Now she's facing four felony charges. So, you know, when you start talking this federal money, a lot of eyes on it. You guys aren't, it's not like, you know, what Jeff did with the library back in 2014 and took the half million dollars to purchase the building and then had to pay the money back when people started looking into it and they kind of swept that under the rug. We're talking a lot of federal money here right now, you know, tens of millions of dollars. And the feds like to keep an eye on their money sometimes. And I will just inform you that I met with the Attorney General's Office about 10 days ago. We talked about the 26 Mile Road project. I've also met with the feds about this. So it's, you're on their radar. So what you guys choose to do moving forward, that's on you. But just be aware that there are eyes on this. And it's not just here where you guys can control everything. There's outside eyes. And, you know, this, this project stinks. Everything that's going on about this project stinks. I think if you want to make people more comfortable, let's just lay it all on the table. Tell Todd Chartier to show what he owns. Tell Kenny to show what he owns. Mr. Vandembosh, show what you own. Everybody lay it all on the table. Here's the properties that I own, here's when I purchased them. And just put it all out there and let everybody see what's going on. And then maybe the community would feel a little more comfortable with this project moving ahead. But the way it's happening now is it's being forced down everybody's throat. Your, your study that you had done said, don't move forward with it. Most of the community that's gonna be affected by it says, don't move forward with it. The only people that want to move forward with it are Jeff. And it's funny that, you know, you got Todd Chartier's got a big bone sign during the election, what's going on? That's not your district. Why has Todd got a sign for you out in front? Well, that's because you're doing Todd's bidding up here and he's looking to make a lot of money with this 26 Mile Road project if it goes through. And real quick, and we talked about this last time with Lisa McLean. We talked about you too, Jeff. And Ms. McLean just said, please don't be name dropping or don't be using her to try to scare people.
Please wrap it up, Kim.
Supporting this because she doesn't. But we know how politicians are and she probably is supporting it. But we at least have her on video saying she doesn't. So, talk to you guys next time.
Okay. Moving on, I have Elizabeth Prill.
Good evening. Okay. There have been public claims of Commissioners not being aware of opposition or nominal opposition to developing 26 Mile Road as an industrial corridor despite robust opposition and commentary at the Board of Commissioners meetings. Over 1,400 citizens responded to the Wade Trim study, community survey. Nearly 96% of respondents did not favor more industrial development along the 26 Mile corridor. The two most important objectives to respondents are protecting farmland and agriculture and preserving natural resources. Nearly 40% of individuals indicated that they actually favor no changes, limited growth, in green space along the corridor. Surprisingly, young people, the generation that will bear the long-term impact of land use, indicated that their primary objective for 26 Mile Road is more green space. There is also the claim, or, you know, we keep hearing that this is just three miles of the west end of the corridor. But EDA CEO Dan Casey listed multiple parcels of agricultural, residential, and commercially zoned property in Chinatownship as available for industrial use. This is at 26 Mile and King Road. This is at the furthest east end of the 26 Mile corridor. That's not three or four miles down the corridor. That's 11 miles down the corridor, which is the entire corridor. So this is, in fact, the full stretch of the corridor. So integrity is really important. I carefully weigh my words and try to be accurate when I make a claim because if I'm on the right side of something, it will stand on its own merit. I also, this is a PSA, so don't take this off my time, please. I was just made aware that some public officials up here have had family members either harassed or threatened. either harassed or threatened. If, if you stand with me, don't participate in anything like that. Public officials are under a microscope, and they can be held accountable for deliberately misleading the public. Their family members are not politicians. They're just kids. They're spouses and, you know, mothers and fathers. So don't participate in anything like that. If you don't like Jeff, if you don't like what he thinks, or anybody else on this panel, then you can go after them in public. But you don't go after their family. Okay, so you put me back on the clock. I want to remind every, oh, nope, excuse me. I do not object to a loan that, when repaid, will establish a county revolving loan fund. But the loan has to make sense, and it has to be in the best interest of the taxpayers. The municipality has to have the ability to repay this loan in the event that your economic plan fails. If you can loan $23 million to one municipality, you can loan $1 million to 23 municipalities and achieve the same end.
You are going to have to wrap it up.
Okay. Or invest it in the county seat where the library, water, sewer, healthcare services, college, et cetera, can be addressed. Municipalities have a long laundry list of needs. Let's take care of those and issue those remaining.
Please finish up. If you would, please. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for hearing me. I had a lot more to say, but that's okay.
You can call me anytime.
I will. I will call you. Thank you. Thank you. Linda Schwaehofer? This is 26 Mile.
Linda Schwaehofer, Chinatownship. And I thank all of you for allowing me this time to be able to speak to you. I've been here a couple of times now, and so I don't mean to sound redundant. And we've already had a couple of people address from other avenues. So I'm going to go ahead and address it from the environmental end of it, you know, especially when we talk about the EV, the battery facilities. We know that they take essential minerals from the ground, and they are like cadmium, manganese, graphite, things that are quite dangerous. And when you put them into a battery, and then they have to be disposed of at some point in time, they don't last forever, then you have to know, you can't be so short sighted that you don't know where they're going to go. And from my understanding, I mean, they're probably going to end up in a dump somewhere or a special spot, and that's where they're going to remain. And God only knows what happens to them. If they have not figured out a way to recycle them, they're there. And they're not going away. Unfortunately, they may very well seep into our water system. And I know for a fact that we have a watershed that we're watching out for, protecting. We have the St. Clair River. We have the drain system down at 26 Mile that goes right out to the, to the bell there. And so we have to be concerned about that, too. And I don't hear anybody saying that. In fact, from what I've been reading, it's like nobody's taking the foot off the gas. It seems like we're kind of going forward, at least, you know, with a few of the commissioners. And I'm not sure anybody's really listening. There's a few that are, and I applaud them for the way they would like to see the COVID funds being used. I'm only one in Chinatownship of a cadre of people that feel the same way. Please don't poo-poo this group, or think that we're not enough of us to make a difference, because I don't think we want to lay down, play dead, and just forget about this, because this is where we live. This is our environment. Like I said before, you cover it all up with blacktop. God isn't making any other land. So we need to preserve what we have. There are many other ways to do that. And I do have a problem with the COVID funds being spent in one particular area. I'm going to stay away from the name-calling or any of that. And I do applaud Libby for her comments, because I believe in that, too. So you didn't even have to tell me my three minutes were up. So I thank you for your time, and I, I just, I hope people are really, really listening to what we have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Kimball, 26 Mile? I think it's you, Kathy. It says Kathy Kimball, but I only know you as Kathy Capone.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Capone. I'm from St. Clair, live in St. Clair Township, and I thank you for this opportunity. This is going to be quick. I look at this a little bit differently than everybody else seems to. I am pro-development, but I don't think this is the way to go about it. It seems to be developers come in, and everything is on their side. And it seems that the communities that let the developers in, oh, this is wonderful. We're going to have all these jobs. And 30 years later, the communities are left with empty buildings and no tax base. And I don't understand why that, why that is. If you own the property, you should be in a better position to negotiate. But that's not the reason I'm speaking tonight. I think I have heard on the news over the last week that we're heading into a recession. That's where we're going. They are talking about that. They really think it's going to get that bad. So my suggestion to you is to take those funds, give them to the communities, let them do what they want with it, and just not go into this right now. I think it's bad timing. And if we're going to win a recession, those municipalities are going to need that money. And I, I just think that that's the best thing to do right at this time. It is not good. That land's not going anywhere. You'll have the plan. You can do it in the future. But I think the economy, the way it's going to be, those communities should have that COVID money. Let them do what the citizens want with it. And just put this off until the economy gets better. We get Biden out of office. We get Trump or DeSantis in there, and get the economy going again, and maybe people will feel different about it. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. John Thompson, 26 Mile Road?
Hello and thank you. Yeah, I lived in Marine City all my entire life. I've driven 26 Mile Road my whole entire life. I don't mind driving out to Macomb County or Clinton Township. I'm opposed for the new development of industry and the expansion of 26 Mile Road. Majority of the people are opposed to what's going to be happening or want to happen, and I'm one of them. And I say, save our farmland and our natural beauty, because once it's gone, it's gone forever. You're never going to get it back. Just a concerned citizen. Thank you.
Debbie Lips? Carbone? 26 Mile Road?
Hi. My family and I have been paying taxes on Lindsey Road since 1962. My dad moved us out there for the country life. We share crops. We live life. Of course, things built up and around. I don't think 26 Mile Road should go like Hall Road did. For one thing, you're talking about 11 miles that lead to nowhere. When the county was out to our township, Casco, last year or the year before, they were talking about, do you guys want it or not? You know, they were opposed of it then. What I've noticed since is certain townships want it, certain ones don't. And then it goes down to who owns property on 26 Mile Road. I'm on the northwest corner of Lindsey and Palms. My house is from the 1800s. Like I said, we've been there since 62. And like Vandabosh, you know, your family's been around a long time. I actually, you guys should be a disgrace as what you want to do in selling the property to do this. Grashit starts down in Detroit, and Grashit came forward. Grashit's what moved everything out here. If any road should be used for any type of development, it should stay on Grashit, come right up, comes right up to here, right to Canada. I just don't see why building up 26 Mile Road is so important when there's only so much land there. And unfortunately, only a few people own that land. And I felt the same way about your sign being out in front of Chartier's. I research. When I go to do things, I research. And I thought, what's this sign even doing here? He's not even in our district. And since then, this was before even 26 was really talked about, since then, you know, there's, there's understanding that, you know, again, certain people get to profit off of this, where if they don't fill the spaces, I mean, the one little strip mallet, 26 and County Line, it still isn't full. And it's been there for years and years. You know, it's, everybody wants to build, and then it sits empty. And we just don't need it going through there. I'm a 59-year-old widow. I'm sick of taxes. I am so sick of taxes. And this is going to go down to the tax people, I mean, or the taxpaying people. Only a few get to benefit. Leave 26. Leave Fredmore Highway. Leave St. Clair Highway. Bring it up Grashit and let it branch off of there. We haven't even had such a population increase that says, oh, we need to do this. We need more restaurants and bars and gas stations. I just, you know, I mean, if you have bad intentions, please just don't do it.
Liz Masters, 26 Mile Road?
Thank you, and thank you for your time. I'm just going to reflect on the comments before me, because they were brilliant and they were very valid thoughts. One thing I wasn't taking into aspect is what Linda Schwaehofer mentioned tonight, and it really got me thinking already. If we are producing a so-called battery facility, and there's already been battery facilities, if they are produced in St. Clair County, there may be an alarm there of who's responsible for disposing of those. So that's a little, that's cutting a lot closer to my home in Wales. That's at the St. Clair County dump. I would be willing to bet that we would be responsible for that. I would just like to reflect that metro planning for St. Clair County is a phenomenal department, if anyone hasn't worked with them. And historically, they have been very efficient, very good. I would, I would ask that this commission turn back to metro planning. As we heard before, it's time to utilize what we already have. We have a lot of vacancies. We have an airport, accessibility for industrial. We have Port Huron Parks. We have Marysville Parks. And if we are headed into a recession, anything like that, if there's anything that's shovel-ready, I know that, that appeals to you, there's anything that's shovel-ready, it would be our already existing or available industrial parks that have those utilities and things available, and they've been properly planned through our planning departments who are educated in planning. So I, I just am going to ask, lastly, that you referred to the expensive survey that was done last year, especially page 17, 18, 19, of the public response. I found that rather alarming when I saw what the public would actually desire. And most of it was leave it as it is, preserve farming and agriculture, and utilize what we already have. It's not a bad idea to go for jobs and for tax base, but we do have facilities and sites available. That's not a bad idea at all. And we have sites and facilities closer to our population. I, I would just ask that jobs and tax base, great idea, but just go a little closer to St. Clair County people, not the Macomb and the Metro Detroit people. So thank you for your time.
Okay. This is going to be a fun one. Jenny? Polachowski. I had that. Thanks. 26 Mile Road?
So I want to say hello. Thanks for having me. A couple of things with regard to the 26 Mile Road plan. I think it's a bad idea for a number of reasons, given many of us here. I didn't exactly know what I wanted to say, or if I was going to say anything at all, because I'm shy by nature, initially anyway. You can get me going, and maybe there's a story for another day. So what I want to touch on is waste from factories. I worked for a Magna facility for four years. Hard work, hard labor. And you do produce a lot of waste. So you have to understand that the people that are within that facility are people that, no disrespect, because I was one of those people. There's, you're not, there's not a lot of education involved. There's not a lot of, people are going to do what they have to do to get things done, and they're going to cut corners. And I've, I've seen a ton of waste being disposed improperly, not illegally, but recklessly. So I think that's going to be a big factor. Also, second to that, with this corridor built up, it seems to me that it is in place, or it is, is in need, to support this, that new facility, and potentially a new facility that's coming around the bend. And I think that's really unfair, because if it were set out in such a way, while we've got a group of people that need a water facility, for whatever reason, that would be a good thing. We would still have to think about it and consider it. But when I heard a talk about the system being put in place, it, it was kind of like, well, you know, if your septic system, you know, you don't want to have it flooding your yard, that would be a bad thing. But you don't have to go that way. You don't have to go that way. And I thought, for Pete's sake. So it's not really, the intention didn't seem to me to be for the value of everyone. It seemed to support these factories, this existing factory that's in place right now, and another factory, more factories to come. And what my fear is, is once this train leaves the gate, it's not going to stop, because I feel like it has to move ahead, and, and, and I don't think that's the right thing to do. And other people here have said, once this is gone, it's never going to come back. You have a diamond. You have a treasure here, and you should be very, very careful to protect it. You have something very rare. Think about that. It's all of our responsibilities to be stewards for something that is shared. It doesn't belong to just one group. It belongs to all of us.
You could wrap it up, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kay Kembau? 26 Mile Road? You're, okay. And then I have Lauren Martin, ARPA.
Good evening. Thank you. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I was just made aware that you guys had decided to split the funds evenly. Is that correct? The ARPA funds between the commissioners, or was that not decided? I got you. Well, I wanted to address you as a Chinatownship resident and yourself. I'm sure you're aware that we now have to pass a new road budget, or a road millage, because ours lapsed. I think that the ARPA funds would be great to go towards the road millage that we are now facing in Chinatownship. Marine City just had a water main break, and I know, you know, they could probably use some help funding that. I, obviously, you guys are all well aware that I'm adamantly opposed against 26 Mile Road. Many of you didn't even take the time to respond to me, which disappoints me. It's no surprise that the majority of the community doesn't want this project to happen. That is undeniable. Week after week, you have people in here, and unless I'm wrong, I don't, I don't think that I am. I think a majority of the people don't want it. And if it goes through and you push for it, at this point, it seems personal. It seems like you're doing it for your own personal gains and not for the benefit of the community. The community is here telling you they don't want it. So as my commissioner, I am asking you to use the funds if you do split it up evenly, which is how I would like it to be, to share it with your municipalities. People in Chinatownship, for instance, we could use that. There are a lot of things in Chinatownship that can be addressed, and I would like to see. see our funds go to that. And I would like to reiterate that I don't want this project to happen. This is where I live, this is where I raise my kids, and this isn't the kind of development that I want to see in my community. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing there is, well, are there any updates from the board that need to be heard? Okay, moving along. Any conceptual initiatives? None. Seeing none. There's no old business, so I'll move to new business. 7A, the airport, the 2023 tractor rental.
Make a motion, we forward that to the full board.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approving assignment amendment and consent of owner lot T3, which is 7B, sorry.
Make a motion and send that to full board.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then 7C, Aeronautics Advisory Board Appointments.
Make a motion.
Support.
Just one comment, it doesn't have to do with this, but the hangar space, we're full out there, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, the private hangars and everything else, so there's no, no availability, I guess.
Is there a mechanic out there these days? Used to be a...
Orzell used to be out there.
You want to ask her?
I was just curious. We used to have a mechanic, there was a fellow out there, did mechanic work, I didn't know if...
Good evening, commissioners. So to answer your question, yes, we do have a aircraft mechanic on the field. It is Great Lakes Aviation Services. They have been on the field for about a year and a half. They took over the old Huron Avionics building. They do airframe, avionics, panels, helicopters. They get their hands dirty. So, and we've actually utilized them to do some recovery services when we've had planes, you know, have some distress. One, we had aircraft that ran off the end of the runway where we had to tow them back. And we've also had to recover one that had a engine failure 10 miles west of the airfield. So they have been a great asset to us. And then to answer Commissioner Bohm's question regarding hangar space, yes, we have leased the final lot within the fenced-in area. We still have a few lots available in our industrial park, and those vary from leased spaces and purchasing. So, yes.
There's a fuel station out there too, right? It's been a long time since I've seen it.
Yes, so we contract our fuel services with Aviation Express. We sell Jet Aid gas for the jets and 100 low lead for the piston aircraft, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, didn't mean to get off topic there, but...
Okay, so 7C, Aeronautics Advisory Board Appointments.
We have a motion and second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Number eight, Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report.
Make a motion to receive and file, Smith Creek Landfill Activities Reports.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Other environmental and public work matters? Seeing that there's none, may I have, oh, information only, 10A.
Make a motion, receive and file, information only.
Support. Except for A and B?
Yes.
Do I have to do, any discussion? Do I have to do that? All in favor?
All in favor, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Receive and file packet.
Still moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Meeting adjourned.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Torello?
Present.
Commissioner Vanda Bosch?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here in person. At this time, we have any additions, deletion, changes to the agenda? I see none. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Still moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. At this time, I have no citizens wishing to be heard. I will move up to updates. We have any updates?
Just a quick one, just to rehash what we had talked about earlier. We had a workshop earlier today from 4 till about 6:00 PM regarding Mercury Broadband. They are the provider that was picked by the federal government to provide broadband services in a good portion of the northernwestern underserved areas of St. Clair County, fiber to the home, some of the fixed wire, fixed wired, fixed wireless access. They're going to be starting that project, I think it was in, it was second quarter 2023. I found it very informative, lots of Q and A, a lot of different commissioners and stuff, so hopefully there is a, there is some hope for the western, for the people out in those underserved areas out in the county. So appreciate Carrie and George and Steve and all you guys working, you know, on this. We're going to be bringing, obviously, a broadband consultant on board to assist us with this moving forward, but it was a lot of good information, so.
Any other updates? All right, any conceptual initiatives?
None.
We have no old business, we'll move to 7A. Ambulance Millage Distribution for Clyde Township.
Make a motion to send this to the full board. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7B, Commissioner Samasco, District 1, American Rescue Plan Project Lynn Township.
Move for your full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'll just note for the record, this was a matter that Commissioner McConnell had approved, and then there were some questions I get occasionally, having come on the board in January, you know, how I'm going to handle his previously approved projects, and I'd indicated I would make no changes to anything previously approved by Commissioner McConnell, and I think this was one of them, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7C, Contract Approver Request Pro West and Associates Incorporated.
Make a motion to send to the full board.
May I say? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7D, Contract Approver Request for Waste Management.
I'll make a motion to send it to the full board. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7E, Resolution 23-04 Honoring Michigan Association of Counties 125th Anniversary.
Make a motion to move it to full board. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7F, Contract Approver Request for Kerr Albert Cooperative Office Supply Contract Through the PACE Purchasing Cooperative.
Still moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7G, Internal ARPA Projects. Can I have a motion first?
Make that motion. Send it to the full board.
Wait, what are we sending, exactly?
Open up for discussion. Carrie, I think, was going to talk about some stuff.
So at previous meetings, commissioners had asked for listings of internal projects that we have, so what we did is we went through the county's capital improvement plan and our mini-capital improvement plan, and categorized all of those projects based on what their eligibility would be for ARPA funding. We currently have $43.8 million worth of projects for funding, and they're broken down by the different categories. $12 million of that has an existing funding source, and about $800,000 of that are operational projects that would have ongoing annual costs, so I wouldn't necessarily recommend ARPA for that since those are one-time funds. But we do have 3.7 that would fall in the loss revenue category, and just under 27 million that would fall under the public health and public harm. So if the board would like to discuss any of these projects or have questions, allocate funds to any of these...
We have approximately 23 million left?
That is correct.
And how much is this going to take out of the 23?
Well, it could potentially take all of it. There's 43 million.
Cost you 20 million.
42 million in projects sold.
So, well, it, it's whatever the board chooses to allocate, you know. Certainly, I would, you know, advocate for certain, certain projects. You know, if, if you look up Commissioner Rushing, you will see a spot on the roof that is starting to leak, so I would like to prioritize some roofing projects.
Of these capital improvements that are already listed to be done, what's going to, because we already have funds allocated for that in future years, correct?
No, not all of, there is about $30 million worth of projects that do not currently have funding identified. Like the landfill projects, they have funding because it's, that's a self-funding fund. Many of our airport projects are funded through grants, and then our millage funds also have a funding source, but many of these are building, infrastructure, IT projects that do not currently have funding identified.
We have a list, I think, now that we're able to take a look at. We didn't, you know, really have that list previously. Sorry.
Yes, Steve?
My, my position had been that the, the monies from ARPA that we had remaining that we would carve out some for operations, there was close to 30 million or so that went directly to townships and municipalities, those that applied, so they already got, you know, $30 million into the townships and municipalities. I want to see more money going to townships and municipalities, as a lot of the citizens are requesting, but I did want to carve out some for operations for the county. I think the county's entitled to use some of those funds for operations, like the roof on the courthouse or the roof on the library, you know, the radials for the Sheriff's Department, there's some things. So I'd like to have some discussion before we start allocating on perhaps 26 Mile Road, engineering versus full shot broadband support, you know. I'm waiting to have that discussion in some form or fashion, so I really appreciate the list. I was one that reached out to Carrie and said, what, what things do we have that are on the capital improvement list that are urgent and could use, you know, that kind of a boost, and then come up with some fair way to allocate some funds for operations so that serves all the county, all the citizens of the county and administrator and the departments, as well as then carve out some for the townships as you did previously, or decide ultimately what to do with the balance of those funds, because it's, you know, there is a window on that, so that's my two cents with that.
Perhaps we could do some, our next meeting's going to be very short, right?
I know.
So, well, no, the, the next meeting's going to be short, there's not going to be a ton of stuff on it, so maybe have some conversation about some of the different capital projects that would be on, on that list. Right?
Great.
On this, and, go ahead, Carrie.
If, if any commissioners have specific questions on the project, on this memo, certainly between now and the next meeting, I would be happy to sit down and discuss them in depth with anyone.
I never hesitate to call you or show up at your office.
Well, and I think we got a lot of good, because, you know, we were talking a lot about broadband before too, right?
Right.
I got, you know, a lot more information today than I had previously, so, you know, some of the, you know, allocations, we were looking towards broadband, but there again, bringing a consultant and working with them, talking to them, is there some additional help that needs to be done to move that project? I don't know.
One piece, I think, Jeff, that's going to develop is, we have certain providers here currently that have cable in the ground. We have RISA, we have other people on the community frontier, New Broadband, AT&amp;T, there are people here already, and I approached that fellow that spoke from Kansas about coordinating with, you know, he wanted to partner. Well, they want to partner, but I was spot on when I said, that's their deal, they're going to bury them with the funds they got, and they're going to sell it and manage it, and that's, so they're not going to, and use the example off the record with me, it's like, it's like asking Target to partner up with Walmart. But there's, Steve Tenniswood is here from RISA, and he had some ideas on how they could do that. And we talked a little bit about, you know, can RISA have what they've carved out, and some other stakeholders have what they carved out, and then can Mercury jump off what's already there and then use more of their funds for actual fiber to the home or better enhanced service and all that? So I asked that fellow too, how do we coordinate that? And then we talked about the broadband advisor, and maybe they can, because I, I know how to ask a lot of questions, but I sure don't have the answers.
Yeah, it seems like it would make a lot of sense if you've already got fiber, you know, RISA fiber running to an area, and if they're going to run additional fiber, the redundancy, you know, doesn't make a lot of sense, right? There again, that's me just sitting in layman's seat here, and I can barely use my cell phone while I'm jumping to the broadband.
Yeah, but they have the CLS grant, they have the Robin Grant, they have the BEAD money, lots of money, you know, people putting in money for grants and, and all these ideas. Is anybody talking to anybody, you know?
Yeah, if you...
Yes, so in preparation for tonight, so, and I don't know if everyone is aware of how we started to, to really talk to Mercury just recently, but I happened to be at, at Fort Grashet, they came in, one of their contractors came in because they were looking for property to store their materials to start staging for this project. And I heard him at the front desk and say, well, no, I'm working with Mercury, and I was like, oh, hey, hey, we need to chat. And so within 24 hours, we got a contact who then we were able to put in touch with some of us, with Dave Struck and Jeff Donaldson, and I think, you know, working with them, one of the things that they were willing to do in every conversation I've had is to even just partner with us. If we, if it needs to go another half a mile down this road, they'd be willing to have that conversation. But now working with a consultant, and then our internal departments to be able to create an entire overlay of where it all is and how it can tie together, so I think the timing is probably perfect, and it makes sense. So I, but they were more than willing to talk with us about expanding, and then I think with RISA on board now, just builds that out farther.
The, where the rubber meets the road, though, is in the actual conversations. If we get the broadband advisor in our planning department and, and talk particulars with them, you know, not generalities, we'll see what level of participation they want, what's out there, what's not. And, you know, like I say, I didn't know, six months ago, I knew very little about this. Well, we've all learned a lot in the last, you know, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, and I'm glad Mercury came. My initial opinion was not good because I had meetings in December and January where planning told me they wouldn't even return a phone call. So it's like, what's, you know, treat me like a chump, you'll get the same thing back, right? Well, but that's all changed. I mean, I like, I like what they presented, they got some good people, I'm going to, they give me information, and I'm going to access that, and I'm very encouraged by all that. And I take this fellow from Kansas City at his word, it seems very genuine, good company, so let's see where it goes, but let's get everybody on the same page and maybe get the best system we can.
Well, with all of the providers.
Everybody.
Yeah, yeah. I agree.
Well, I have concerns because, you know, this 26 Mile Road has been going on for two years, and each municipality down there, us included, agreed to the study. Nobody agreed to the actual plan that was drafted by Wade Trim when it finished, so that hasn't been approved by any board as of yet, of Ass Geira, of Ass Casco, and you've gotten the resolutions from various municipalities that are opposed to it. So we came up with a Phase 1, a Phase 2, and if you put those totals in, and the 750,000, we're in right around $22 million for the total project. We were looking at this within the last two months to potentially send 15 million, maybe on Phase 2, 21 million down to 26 Mile Road out of the 23 million that we had left. As of our last meeting, it was suggested that 2 million be spent on county stuff and 21 be spent, recommended that get split seven ways for the commissioners, so each commissioner would have 3 million. I'm kind of surprised that we have 42 million being recommended tonight to go to the full board in two weeks, and if we approve this in two weeks, the entire amount of the monies will not be going to what was discussed prior, right?
I'm just saying, put it on to talk about the project. I'm not looking to say we're going to throw 40...
We can table it at that time. You don't have to make a motion.
It's, it's a conversation, just put it under an update conversation, whatever, talk about stuff, you know, I mean, this isn't, this isn't...
My, my understanding, or even when I made the motion, was not to approve this entire amount, it was to, to open it, to talk about it because...
Okay, which, correct.
Yes, oh, yeah, no, that wasn't a, let's spend all this.
Well, part of our conversation, you know, like Jeff's always says, because he's going to be running the meeting, a lot of our conversation takes place at the committee meeting, so we air a lot of our concerns here tonight, whichever board it's on. So part of the conversation can start tonight, and that's what I'm doing here. And we're fortunate to have Liz Masters here tonight from Wales. And we're fortunate to have Liz Masters here tonight from Wales. She has concerns, as many municipalities do, on very important items to them. I'm concerned that we're not going to use any of this money for the residents that we represent, so that's where I'm going to be starting with on this conversation, to potentially use all 23 million on remaining projects, and none of the municipalities or the people that I represent that put me in office, and they're not going to get a cent, potentially, wherever this conversation goes. I can't support that, I don't think it's the right thing to do, we have the people that put us in office. These expenses, these 42 million, will be there regardless, if we use any of this money for that or not. We're going to have to fix this stuff. If that's on a priority basis, you came up with this list from our last meeting, because I wasn't aware of any of these 42 million prior to that. You already had the capital improvements, that wasn't included in this 42 million, right?
No, these are the projects that are in the capital improvement plan that the board has already approved, so you have seen this project list. The list you haven't seen was the mini CIP, and, and just to clarify, I'm not asking the board for 42 million, this is the list of the outstanding projects for your review and discussion.
Do you have a approximate figure, as of now, that you would, on your wish list, that you'd like to get done as our administrator?
The priority projects?
It's up to us.
If I got everything I wanted, it would be 7 million of that. A large portion of this is for a new health department facility, and that is a bigger conversation, but 7 million would take care of a lot of internal projects.
Yes, Steve?
Steve, do you at least agree in principle with my suggestion that the townships...
Please talk into the mic, you know, I can't hear.
Yeah, sorry about that. Do, do you agree with my general proposition that the townships and municipalities who have gotten a significant amount in the balances left, there should be some portion carved out for county operations, so that when you say your people in your district get nothing, the county serves everyone. What we put into the roof in the courthouse or the whatever helps everyone, so my, I wasn't saying just don't give people money anywhere, but carve some of it out for urgent operational needs, so do you at least agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
If we have priority issues, if there's a, potentially, I'll just use, potentially we're going to have a tornado today, if we had something come through like that, I could very easily say, okay, we're going to fix it with the money we have remaining, and put it on one emergency issue, but that didn't happen, that I'm aware of, and, but we need to make decisions with the information that we have at the time.
And quite frankly, I always spent a lot of time on the broadband stuff that came up, so I really didn't get a chance to look into a lot of that that Carrie did, I mean, I looked at it, but I'd like to have some more chance to talk about it and get it up in front of a meeting to go over.
The test was tonight.
What's that?
The test was tonight.
I know, I know.
Yeah, George.
Then, does it make sense to do some kind of workshop, some kind of, you know, go over the priority list, talk to those? Because when, you know, you mentioned just a minute ago that our projects are going to be here, well, so are those municipalities' projects, right? We all have that, so if there are things that administration is saying, these are priority, we can use the money, because the money does have to be spent within a certain amount of time, it does have some limitations on what it can be done, so if these, have these projects been vetted to, through the ARPA rules, correct?
Yes, on the sheet, I color coded them based on what category they could fall under.
I think it's a great idea to have, like, I liked the workshop we did on the broadband before this meeting, just give us an hour, hour and a half before next meeting to talk about that issue, that would be great.
If you want to do that, I'm fine with that.
If it's my schedule nice, I can come in a little early and take care of it and pack it into one deal, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all up for discussing everything. You look at, and Liz is here, of course, and being a previous township supervisor, Fort Grashit has a bigger pool of money to work with. I believe her budget's under half a million. We're talking, and if you were to give each Commissioner, I can just speak for my district, six townships, and we were to get 3 million, that means that each one of my townships are going to get 500,000, that's the total amount of her entire annual budget. She can do an awful lot of good stuff with that. Same with Riley and the outlaying Lynn Township, the outlaying townships, the Clay Townships, they have a ton of money, so they might not get...
There is a lot more restrictions, correct me if I'm wrong, this pot of money...
So my townships don't matter?
Yes, we do.
Well, you just said they've got all kinds of money. They've got needs too.
Exactly.
But they've also gotten, everybody's gotten ARPA funds.
Correct.
Where is their ARPA funds?
So, so there are a lot more restrictions, so my understanding is you can't fix roads with this pot, that's not in the criteria on what these ARPA funds can be spent with, so when you talk about the more smaller rural townships, out of its roads and ditching and some, you know, you, you know, you spend 80% of your county budget on roads, right? I mean, something like that when you're in Riley. Can, can these funds be used for those types of things, Carrie?
So, the first time around, when Commissioners allocated funds to each district, we did it under the lost revenue category, so it could be used for any provision of government services. Now, you're going to be out of lost revenue in that category, so it's going to have to fall into the water sewer, the broadband, or responding to the public health emergency category, so it's, it's a lot of the general items won't be able to be addressed.
Yeah, but on the Clean Water Act, I can use Liz Masters, again, Wales Township, her and Riley, we did an awful lot of ditching, that would fall into an approved use, I've done, done some research myself, so any ditching that could assist to get the water off the roads is an approved use, and if a township, let's say, again, Liz, if she allocates $40,000 for ditching, if she got 40,000 for ARPA funds, that frees up 40,000 for stone, for other things that can be done, culverts, well, culverts would fall in the Clean Water Act also, so it actually would free up money that each supervisor from any township or municipality would be able to say, okay, I'm using this, that will be approved ARPA funds, but it frees up monies out of their general fund, you understand that as a previous township supervisor. So I definitely, that's one of my concerns, and I definitely want to have a conversation, the workshop, and we'll discuss the needs, but I think we need to take care of who put us in office, at least that's my position. Yes, Steve?
Whatever number this board eventually determines would go to townships, my intention would be to invite the townships and municipalities in my district to submit requests to the administrator. She's trained in this, as, as is Corporation Counsel. I've looked at the Code of Federal Regulations, it's mind-numbing government blather, a lot of it, I mean, I've read through it time and time again, and I still can't tell you precisely what's in and what's out, so you guys have had more training, you know, I've looked at it, my position's going to be, I tell people, I'm a lawyer, but I'm not the board's lawyer, I'm not the township's lawyer. You're going to look at it, and if administration says it fits, I'm going to go with administration. Corporation Counsel says it fits, I'm going to go with Corporation Counsel, but at least submit the plan, submit what they want, if we say it doesn't fit, then maybe give them one more chance to put a proposal, and it does, and if it doesn't, then it goes someplace else. You know, put some timeframes, you've got so many days or, you know, weeks or whatever to put it in, and then if it doesn't go, it goes someplace else, because it's got to go someplace, right? So, you know, to me, that's how it would be administered, is put in for it, if it flies, it fits, good, it's approved, it's gone, to get it allocated, if it doesn't, give it another try, if you can't come up with something.
Well, here's exactly what I did last time, Steve, we each given 500,000, and I went to each supervisor, each ward, and they gave a list, and I went to Carrie's Heppings office, and those were approved uses, I did the exact same thing again, these are the approved uses.
But those were under lost revenue, which everything was approved, right?
Therefore, who I served, most of it would have been ditching and culverts and that kind of stuff.
Right, but my concern is, okay, if it's approved, if it's lost revenue, you can spend it on balloons and confetti, I guess. I mean, I don't know, but if it's, if it's not, if it's not lost revenue funding, then it's got to fit these criteria, and it's, there's recoupment issues and all these things, and it's very, it's quite complicated, so you've got a big job ahead of you to sort that out, so. You'll find a way.
You can call me, call me, Liz, so, and we're going to continue the conversation, and I'm glad we started it here, and, well, we've had a motion, did we have a second?
But a motion to set up a workshop?
Yeah, let's, what the heck?
Okay.
What do we, think we need, an hour or so, two hours, what do we need?
Why don't you do four, do four clocks?
Hour.
Yeah, four clocks, good.
Either, either's fine, I'm going to be able to get the information from all my supervisors, I'm going to...
The day of the regular board meeting?
Yeah.
I'd say.
Before, yeah.
You know, let's do a 4:00 PM workshop for our meeting, and if we get a little break in between meetings and stuff.
Do we need to have this one forwarded to the full board, or do you want to have a motion just for workshop?
Stay on the full board, and we can table it or do whatever we want, that way we can address it if we're ready to address it, if not, we can...
Actually, you just, if you don't make a motion at all, it just falls off.
It just falls off, yeah.
Okay.
The workshop, 4:00 PM, so I...
It'll be, it'll be on, it'll be on the agenda, but if no one, if we're not ready to move, we'll decide at the workshop, where are we going? We're going to pass something, not pass something, move on, if not, it'll fall off or table it, whatever, you want to table it to a time...
So we have a motion to send it to the full board, do we have a second for that?
Wouldn't it be final action if we're making a special meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we're going to do that, see if I'm correct, we need a motion to send this to the full board, and if we take...
No, I can, we, it can be placed directly on...
Okay, fair enough, so we have a motion?
For the workshop.
For the workshop.
For 4:00 PM on April 20.
Not yet.
I'll second the workshop.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed.
Just point of clarity, just a general thing, on, on workshops, we don't need motions to set workshops, we just set them, right?
I don't know, because it's a chain, or...
It's a meeting schedule.
All right.
I mean, technically, no.
It doesn't hurt, and I ask for it, and I'm the chair of the Ways and Means.
All right, Dave, didn't mean to step on your toes. He got a motion, he got a motion. I'll give him a motion.
Moving on to eight, do we have any other Ways and Means matters at this time? Seeing none, number nine, information only, city report here in planning commission's public hearing, can I have a motion? Receive and file.
Still moved, support.
Any discussion?
It passed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passed, moving on to 10, can I have a motion to receive and file?
Still moved. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved, support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned.